I would like to call the Avalon City Council -- Oops. The Avalon City Council meeting of 2/5th, 2-ordered. This will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as a successor agency. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. And Gabby, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, I'd like to announce that Councilmember Albers will not be in attendance this meeting. Scott Campbell, our city attorney, will not be either, but we do have Elizabeth Hull from BB&amp;K to sit in for him.
Great, thank you, welcome. Nice to see your face. We're blessed, this is the second meeting in a row we haven't had him.[76.45][76.45][laughter] Presentations. Is Adeline in here?
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Adeline Young with Southern California Edison. And I'm joined by my colleague Dean Caskey, who's the interim Catalina Water Supervisor. So, thank you for allowing us time to share some information about an upcoming infrastructure project that we'll be working on. Southern California Edison will be doing maintenance work on Avalon's freshwater distribution system. The project involves the construction and replacement of underground water valves in city streets and will ensure that customers and visitors continue to receive safe and reliable drinking water across the island. To safely complete this work, it will be necessary to temporarily shut down water service in the area served by each valve. Customers on the distribution water lines connected to the valve being installed can expect to be without water service for about eight hours only on the day the valve is being installed. So, we have -- we will be notifying the affected customers twice. A letter was already mailed last week to all potentially impacted customers. And in addition, door hangers will be posted at least 48 hours in advance of the water shut-off. The door hanger will have information about the specific date and time of the planned water service disruption. So, we are planning on -- we have been planning and trying to sequence the work to minimize public and customer service interruptions. We have been meeting regularly with your Public Works Director and we want to thank him for the time that he's shared with us. And in fact, we did meet with him yesterday and we will continue to update him on the project as it progresses. Additionally, a local Catalina experience site representative has also been hired to help us achieve optimal project success. So, he's familiar with the island and familiar with how the city works, so that we want to minimize any impacts. So, work for this project is planned Monday through Saturday between 8:00 to 6:00. Monday, Wednesday, and weekends are high visitor count days, so water shut-off will be planned for Wednesday, Thursday, and Fridays to the extent possible. Work is scheduled to start this Friday. The water shut-off won't occur until next week and the project will end at the end of June. So, I do have copies of the press release that will be issued tonight and it will be shared with the local papers and also with the community bulletin. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. No questions? And thank you, Dean, for coming.
And I can share, you know, when our discussions, that we learned a lot when we did the 22 saltwater valves and how we had to move around sawcutting first and then as we got into the archaeologically sensitive areas, how when we had the archaeology and the Native American monitors on site, how we had to move through those in certain locations. So, there was a process and then after we got that done, we could plate and so you'll see the plates come back. What we learned from that so that we efficiently could move through those locations and keep the shutdowns to a minimum and also not cause, you know, the public any more inconvenience than that type of project does, okay? So, we've had those discussions. But that leads into good evening, Mayor, and council members. Tonight, we're excited to present the concept design elements for the five-corner comprehensive pedestrian project. It is my understanding that the desire to make changes to the five-corner intersection dates back to at least 2005. At that time, it was realized the intersection was lacking sufficient pedestrian facilities. Intermeasures were deployed with traffic cones loosely placed to help guide traffic through the large expanse of pavement. With the help of some grant funds, progress was made to develop plans for a pedestrian-friendly intersection using complete street concepts that address similar concerns in other cities. Due to a lack of construction funding, that project was shelved. So, in 2014, the city was successful in acquiring $1.736 million in grant funding towards a project from Metro. The previous effort most certainly contributed to that grant award. Last month, City Council resolved to move forward with a grant agreement for that funding along with committing $485,000 in future city matching funds for the construction. Since October 2017, city staff along with the city's on-call engineering consultant, ESG, and subconsultants, W-Trans for Traffic Engineering and RRM, our Landscape Architect, have been working on updated concepts to present to the community. While this plan seems similar to the previous plan done by Willdan, there are major differences. This is due in part to the science of complete streets design has evolved due to lessons learned from projects built across the United States and it's still evolving as we build projects. A successful complete streets project first considers all transportation modes to be of equal importance and then attempts to assign space for all modes to safely and efficiently operate together in a system. The team we have assembled to work on this project is an experienced complete street design team. Please listen to the presentation. At the end of the presentation, we will ask council if the team is on the right track with the concepts. If yes, we will push ahead with a public outreach effort before we come back for project approval. So, tonight, we're just listening to concepts. So, since tonight is not the project approval, I suggest we keep our review to a concept level and not get into the weeds, okay? You'll have time to do that during the workshops and the public will too. So, I'd like to introduce Steve Weinberger, a principal for W-Trans, and Brian Henigan, a principal for RRM, to continue with the presentation.
Good evening. Steve Weinberger with W-Trans. Happy to be here tonight, a really interesting project that we've been given to tackle. So, Brian Henigan will follow me in the presentation. I am the traffic engineer. Brian is the designer. We've worked with Brian's firm for over 20 years, so have had experience on other projects working with Brian as well. So, you know, I'm a registered traffic engineer in California. For this project, I should note that I'm also a certified instructor for the National Complete Streets Coalition and I'm also a certified instructor for the National Center for Safe Race to School, two organizations I was certified by. And so, constantly working on Safe Race to School projects, complete street projects where we're designing for all modes of transportation interacting in one space. It's the type of project I love working on. So, this one had some unique challenges, but it's the type of project that I'm continually working on. So, I'm going to -- we're going to start with a quick video. I think it lasts about a minute just to give folks a flavor of what are the peak traffic conditions at the intersection during 7:45 to 8:00 in the morning. And the videos, these videos, I actually took this morning and Jordan was nice enough to splice them together for me. I'll warn you, they start out at two times, the speed, or normal speed. After the first -- start after the first snippet here, it'll go to eight times speed. So, we just want to give you a quick flavor of what's happening during that peak time of the morning.
That's actually how that happens.[599.16][599.16][laughter]
All right. So, we have gone to eight times speed. We want to spend a lot of time looking. But one thing, and especially on this angle, this is a key angle that I'll be showing you, the width of Tremont Street. You'll see in a second, autoette will come in, okay, after the truck will come in and around. Okay? That's one issue I want to make sure we address as part of this project, is that this wide width of the street creates a lot of really inventive moves.[635.66][635.66][laughter] Okay. So, thanks to Jordan for that. All right. So, I'm going to just go through my observations, existing conditions as a traffic engineer, a traffic safety professional, what I think are the main issues to address, what our recommendations are. You see them on the plans over here. I will go through the proposed solution from a traffic geometric standpoint and then Brian will go through it from a design, urban design landscape architecture standpoint. Okay. I think everybody knows where we're talking about, the five-corner's intersection, which serves a lot of civic uses. All have to come through this intersection for your school, your visitors going to the Botanical Garden, the high school, most importantly in this case, since we are, the grant is addressing pedestrian safety. So, that is the number one thing on my mind, but obviously, everything happens at that location is sort of intertwined and intermixed. My view of this intersection, it is a non-standard designed intersection with non-standard traffic controls that create some unusual geometrics, roadway geometrics, and sort of a wide path that creates a lot of, you know, that I said, results in some real creative moves through the intersection. One of the issues that I want to make sure we address, you know, with the autoette use here, it really, that to me is one of the main safety issues. We're dealing with autoettes, open vehicles, and other trucks at the same time and the potential, we don't need a high-speed collision for there to be safety issues. And one thing I'll point out is we tried to, we investigated, couldn't find any accident records for the intersection. I don't know if that's an anomaly, if that's correct. I mean, I, it could very well be that there haven't been any reported accidents, but to me, the open autoette vehicle doesn't need a hard collision for there to be, you know, significant safety issues. This angle, which I highlight in the video, the wide expanse of Tremont Street is the root of a lot of the problems at the intersection because people don't actually use this as one intersection. It's many intersections overlap with one another. Your sidewalks have, mark crosswalks are you, markings are used to designate pedestrian walkways, which is fine, but again, you're in the same space as a vehicle and generally, you want to separate those with some hard surface, a curb. I did want to point out the concrete apron that you see on the left of the screen, do have, which is the culvert running through there. The engineers who are working with are addressing that and, you know, the grade of this intersection isn't, needs to be redesigned with the solution here. So, I'm not going to talk a lot about the grade of this intersection, but just so you know, the civil engineers, ESG on this team, have been survey, have done surveys, have done regrading plans, initial plans. So, we are communicating with them on the maximum grade for the solution. That's about all I'm going to say about grade, just so you know, it's something for ladder, for details later in the process. Okay. So, I counted maybe 14 modes of transportation through the intersection. I think what's most important about those is you have the most prevalent vehicles, the green, in green, the autoettes and the golf carts, you know, against the, what, vehicles that can cause the most safety issues, the red ones, the trucks, the Hummers that come through here. The Hummer versus an autoette to me is a big red flag. And then for Safe Race to School, the cyclists, the pedestrian, those using active transportation modes, walking, biking, et cetera, against those red vehicles, again, a big safety issue and that's mainly what we're designing for. As I said, the open autoette vehicle, we're designing for, but from, in terms of safety, for non-pedestrian safety issues, the number one vehicle safety I see is the need to reduce speeds and conflicts where autoettes are involved. These are vehicles, obviously, as we all know, that are no seatbelts are worn, we have, you have young children going to school in the back and I think it's very important to design something that's going to slow the speed and make everybody sort of know what the other vehicle's going to do and where they're going to be. So, standard intersection design, either you have T-intersections or four-way intersections. In a perfect world, they're all perpendicularly lined out. And when we use stop signs in traffic engineering, we, you either put them in one direction at the leg of the T on the left or in one direction or the other at a four-way intersection. The standard way to approach stop signs is one leg or one direction or all the way around, okay? When you end up with a situation where you have, in the case of the T here, the leg of the T or one direction but not the other, or in the case of the other, three of the legs being stopped and not the fourth, we call that an unbalanced stop sign. That is not a standard way to use stop signs. You try to avoid that all the time. Doesn't mean, you know, that you do end up with locations and you're not the only city that has unbalanced stop sign locations, but it's something that I pay attention to because it does cause confusion for drivers. So, I kind of dissected this intersection and I see three intersections and they're all overlapped. And the Sumner intersection on the left is an always-stop T-intersection. The other two intersections are also T-intersections but have two of the three legs stopped. So, as I just shown, those are, to me, are unbalanced stop-controlled intersections. So, not only do we have three intersections that are overlapping, we all, they're also elongated across Tremont Street. We did, actually, I did the account back in September during that 15-minute period where you have most of your, you know, most of your traffic, your only traffic ingestion happening during the day is during that 15-minute period. The rate, if I took that 15 minutes of traffic and multiplied by four, the hourly rate of vehicles entering the intersection is about 1,148 vehicles per hour, which in the traffic world is, is a moderate amount of traffic that needs to be controlled. If I ran it through programs, although this was a very difficult one to put in, doesn't, didn't fit perfectly into our software, but as best we could, it's rated a level surface F, where A being the best, F the worst. I'm not actually sure it meets the, and that's all based on the amount of delayed traffic experiences during that 15-minute period. I think it's actually not quite that bad, but sort of speaks to the odd nature of the intersection. So, I'm just going to show you other ways that we look at the intersection, the pedestrian paths shown in blue and the one that I noted when I was here last. We did have a number of mostly high school students who crossed diagonally through the intersection, the one in the middle. Sometimes they're, during off-peak hours, I think you get a lot of other pedestrian paths because people feel comfortable just walking anywhere through the intersection during the off-peak. During that morning peak, you see this diagonal movement through there. This is my sort of, just like, quick, if, what are all the potential paths, that vehicle paths taken through the intersection? And you overlay those two and you'll see about 38 vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points and about 28 pedestrian-vehicle conflict points. And you see that, what's so critical about that one through the middle, how many different points which a vehicle so could conflict with them. So, as a pedestrian, you don't know whether this spot is the, where I should be looking for vehicles or 10 feet more or 5 feet more. It's frankly, all across the intersection. You have the potential for a vehicle coming. Okay. I'm not going to read through these, but I just made a number of observations. Some of these I've already talked about, but that wide expanse of pavement being key, the wide variety of vehicles is sort of a key issue. You have this very intense 15 minutes and then things are pretty quiet throughout the rest of the day. You have visitors who are unfamiliar with the area, unfamiliar with their vehicle, looking at a map, maybe stopping in the middle of the intersection to see which way they're going. And then you have, you know, those of you that work in town, trying to get around places, having to deal with them. You know, you probably have all experienced that, but it's something that we need to take into account. The fire department being here, always is traveling through this intersection and we've taken that account in our design and I'll show you how in a minute. You have your bus stop. We've got to make sure that the bus stop is accommodated during, yeah, in the design. So, on the right, I've, is my recommendations for these things. We need to create an intersection design that creates a more consistent travel path, not a wide variety. As you saw, the one, the one car in the video that went down the middle is everybody takes a consistent path, more channelization, so you know exactly where every vehicle's going to be traveling through the intersection. Don't give that wide pavement and let the driver decide. Consistent low speeds to hit, that's safety issue. Safety for the autoettes, safety for the pedestrians, safety for the bikes, using standard crosswalk markings and sidewalks, and that raised concrete apron, which I mentioned, that, which is a confusing, when I started, first started looking at that, that sort of jumped out of me, what is this on the aerial until I went there and talked to the city? But that will be, that hump will be removed from the intersection. Okay. So, Bob mentioned the Willdan study from the early 2000s and this was their design. When we came in September, we were shown this. I'll tell you, roundabout design, it's a small roundabout was designed by them. Roundabout design in my firm, actually, my roundabout designer who's worked with me on this, him and I have worked for about 20 years on roundabout projects. The guidelines, the manuals that provide us, design guidelines for that, have evolved in those 20 years. So, it is, it is a very particular traffic engineering design process that is still evolving and will continue to evolve. But we've been in contact with the design guidelines and those writing the design guidelines, so we have a good feel for what has happened from a roundabout design standpoint and where things are now. Since 2005, there's been some changes. So, this wasn't a bad design. We definitely saw a way to improve it. So, this was sort of just a starting point for us. And this is what we'll be showing tonight is our proposed geometric design. And the thing I want to tell everybody is these are, I'm calling these dual mini-roundabouts, okay? And mini-roundabout is a technical design term. And any roundabout, whether it's a mini or a standard-sized roundabout, all operate the same. And I'll come back to this, but I did, I did want to show you some other roundabout photos. I can easily spend 30 minutes just talking about sort of roundabouts, why they're a tool that's being used in traffic engineering to address issues, but I'm going to keep it to a few slides. So, this is a standard, modern roundabout intersection. It's got 120 feet in diameter. This is a design that my firm did in the Sonoma Valley in Northern California. Think of that as consistent about roundabouts. Yield on entry, vehicles inside the circle have right-of-way, one decision to be made as you're entering. Do I have a gap to my left that I can pull right and circulate counterclockwise and choose my exit point? It's very simple. Do I have a gap to my left? Can I enter? That's the one decision vehicles have to make. Doesn't matter what's happening on the other side of the intersection. Okay? Same thing, same thing here. But this is a standard roundabout. It is not the size that we're suggesting for this location. Okay? This is not a roundabout. This is a residential traffic circle. It is used for traffic calming, speed reductions in neighborhoods. It is this, you can equate to a traffic signal. It has capacity elements built into the design. This is not a traffic capacity-type facility. It is purely to slow traffic down. That is not what we're proposing here either, okay? What we're proposing is what's called a mini-roundabout. I showed you the other one, 120 feet in diameter. Mini-roundabouts are generally less than 70 feet. The main difference with the roundabout I showed you, this one, this one you'll see in the middle, has some landscaping and it has what's called a truck apron around the, around the landscaping. That specifically has a curb to it. Traffic should stay off of it. Trucks have no problem mounting their back of the cab onto the truck apron. So, that's like the key element that keeps speeds under control at a roundabout, okay? The big difference with what we're proposing, the mini, is that center island is all mountable by any, by vehicles, especially trucks. Does not have any signs, does not have any landscaping in it, okay? They're specifically, they've, they've evolved after the roundabout design guidelines came out. The Federal Highway Administration finally put out some design guidelines for mini-roundabouts and that's just happened in the last five to six years, okay? So, there are, and they're specifically for lower-volume intersections, lower-speed intersections. So, there's definitely a threshold. We're comfortable that this location is well below that threshold. Okay. I'm going to just show you some quick examples, the minis, that we found. This one is in New York State and these are all retrofit projects. This is in the state of Maryland. This one is on Solomon's Island, Maryland, so I thought it was kind of interesting, kind of an island community. Whoops. I think I just... Jordan?
Stop watching cartoons. You guys work hard.
Are we like dead?
Yeah, nobody.
About you're the ones that are going to be there. But anyway, so Captain Hocking, would you like to come up this time and bring your officers?
Maybe you want to come around and listen. All right. Next, this sounds good.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to introduce two new deputies to the island. I have Deputy Doug McClure and Deputy Adam Colette. They have both been on the island for about two months. I'll let each of them introduce themselves.
Good evening. I'm Doug McClure. It's a pleasure to be here. I just spent 20 years at Norwalk Sheriff's Station, so not that anything would be better than that. This is a lot better than that, so thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Doug.
Good evening. My name's Adam Colette. I'm almost at 20. I'm at four, so I'm getting there.
Yes.
But very happy to be here, happy to work for Captain Hawking. Love this place, great community, great people. Thank you.
Wonderful.
John, are they day shift, night shift?
What shifts do you guys work?
We have a premium schedule from eight to nine till six in the morning.
Everybody's asking.
With Wednesday, Thursday, working Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday? That's my shift, and he's on the other side of the schedule.
Okay.
So you probably won't see as much.
Yeah, what I did was I, we had a lot of people, a lot of deputies put in for Avalon Station, and I went through all the deputies' resumes, all their past discipline, their arrests, are they proactive, blah, blah, blah. And when I got done, these were the top two deputies out of everybody that put in.
You mean neither of them have been arrested before?
Neither of them have been arrested. They're all doing good. So, yeah, they're going to be, so far, two months they've been here, they've been a pleasure to supervise. I'm hearing positive things about them out on the, from the community, and that's what I'm looking for, is to get people, both of these deputies, really believe in the community-oriented policing philosophy, and for that reason is why I chose them to come here.
Great.
And I'd also like to talk about an incident that happened last Saturday. There's a lot of word of mouth on the island about what happened, and I just wanted to, for those that know me, I am very honest, clear-cut, and I just tell the story how it happened. Saturday, the deputies received a call of a person with a handgun. The call came out on Beacon, just, would that be east of Clarissa, one of the residents over there. And the deputies contacted the informant, the person that called us, who happened to be a visitor on the island that was renting a condo. And they took the deputies up to their upstairs room where they saw the person with the handgun. Deputies looked down, and they see the person with the handgun, just how the informant described it. They called for additional deputies that weren't on duty yet but were on the island. They get three, four, five deputies over there, and they also called for the fire department in case there's any type of shooting. During their investigation, they were able to detain two people, one that had the gun in his hand. He complied, set the gun down, and they both were ordered to lay out on the ground. Further investigation showed that the weapon was actually a BB gun. It was not a real gun. And the point for me telling the story is, I can describe to you, when I say a BB gun, you think of a, like a, what's that, you'll-shoot-your-eye-out kid, a Daisy BB gun-type thing. But when I show you the photo, and you're a police officer or a fireman responding to a person with a gun call, and your family tells you, "Make sure you're safe at work today. Come home to me," and so forth, this is the BB gun that the person had. You can see six rounds right here that look like regular bullets. On the barrel of the gun, it says 357, which means a 357 handgun. It is very dangerous to be walking around with a gun like this, especially if you, somebody calls law enforcement and they respond out there. Luckily, the person that had the gun complied immediately, and everything worked out well. But you see on the news all the time, all over the United States, police officers end up shooting somebody that has a toy gun, a BB gun. And what you don't see a lot of times is what the police officer has to go through because he shot a juvenile, this happened to be a young adult, but he shot somebody that didn't have a real gun and wasn't trying to hurt them. So my point for bringing all this up, if you have a BB gun, please use it in a safe manner. Don't just carry it with you when you're walking around and pointing it at people and so forth. It's very, could be very dangerous. But everything worked out well with it. Yes, ma'am.
But I have a question, because I know what a BB gun looks like, and I know what BBs look like. Those BBs look as though they're contained in that bullet.
Correct.
Okay. So that would have to penetrate to open up the front of that bullet to let the BBs out. So what are you actually, I mean, that would hurt more than a BB gun because you've got all the power and it's a bullet.
Right. What happens with this is you place the BBs inside this cartridge, so it holds multiple. When you pull the trigger, one BB or pellet shoots out, one at a time. It's made to look like a real gun.
So there's a hole at the top of those?
There's a hole in the end of it instead of having a bullet that actually shoots out. And the definition of a BB gun compared to a regular firearm is gunpowder is inside the cartridge of the, of the cartridge, the bullet, if you want to call it that. And when the firing pin hits it, there's an explosion, and that shoots out. A BB gun either shoots out based on air cartridge or a spring or some type of thing like that. So I'll pass this around to the council. You guys can see it. And then when it gets over here, I'll pass it out to the audience. And so I just wanted to make it very clear what happened with that call, why the deputies responded like that. And I'd really like to thank the fire department that also responded. They were right there with the deputies, and if there would have been any type of injury to anyone, the fire department paramedics would have been there to provide first aid immediately. So thank you very much, Mike. We really appreciate that.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing the gentleman in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome, guys.
Okay.
Should we continue?
Yes.
I think we were, okay, we were talking about roundabouts, mini roundabouts. Federal Highway Administration, as I said, now has design guidelines for mini roundabouts, and I was showing you these locations. Okay, we left off here. So these last three, the last three examples I've shown you, what is consistent with them is the smaller size and the fully mountable center island. So that's the type of size that we're proposing here. And you'll see when Brian gets up, we're not proposing just kind of pavers in the center that'll look like, it'll, you know, look much different. But one thing I wanted to point out is when we're talking about a standard four-way intersection, you'll see, and these come from federal highway presentations, a standard four-way intersection controlled by a traffic signal or a stop sign has 32 vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points, 24 vehicle-pedestrian conflict points. When you go to that roundabout, you only have eight vehicle conflict points and eight vehicle-pedestrian conflict points. So it reduces the points at which vehicles and pedestrians, vehicles and vehicles interact. And the main thing, slower speed, sort of speed moderation, designing for that slower speed is sort of the key design goal of the roundabout design. I won't get into this much. Basically, roundabouts do have capacity similar to if this were a traffic signal. You have no traffic signals, which is great, but the roundabout can provide capacity much more than, say, a stop, an always-stop intersection can. So we ran this through our software, and we're much more confident in sort of these configurations than what exists now. But it'll operate a level service A with very little delay. By the way, the smaller of the two is a 50-foot in diameter, and the larger one is 60 feet in diameter. So they're within the mini's design guidelines, less than 70. And it will have reserved capacity for, you have, as we understand, some additional workforce housing coming in at the Casita site. This will have, can accommodate much more traffic than with the traffic that's there now. Okay, so the pedestrian vehicle pass, we drew those for you with the proposed design. So the one crosswalk that I did want to focus on was the one in the middle. And by the way, the crosswalks, standard roundabout design is, the crosswalks are placed one vehicle behind the vehicle that's waiting to enter. And that's very standard in roundabout design. Do not put them right at the edge of the intersection, but they're one vehicle back, so vehicles waiting to enter, pedestrians cross behind them. The one in the center, we debated about whether we were going to include it or not. There's only 30 feet separating these two roundabouts, with the prevalent vehicle being as short as it is, and the low volumes that we're talking about, and the fact that we think some of the high school kids will continue to want to, will probably want to walk through here. We've gone ahead and included that center roundabout. And as you see, if you think about one vehicle waiting to enter each one, and somebody crossing, there should be room for somebody to cross behind two vehicles that are waiting to enter. It was a slight concern of ours, but we think because of the community we're in here and the type of vehicle that is most prevalent, that we went ahead and included that center crosswalk. So you see the pedestrian pass, and when Brian gets up, he'll talk more about the sidewalk, proposed sidewalk improvements around the study area here. This is the vehicle and bike path. So with roundabout design, with a standard large-size roundabout, you give two paths for the cyclists. You give them a ramp off to get off, and actually, you make the sidewalks wider so less experienced cyclists can travel on the sidewalk, or you let them sort of claim the lane and become a vehicle. So with that, we have, we, any cyclist traveling here are traveling, would be traveling about the same speed as the vehicles with the design speed that we are designing to here. So bikes would travel, become a vehicle to enter the intersection. And when you overlap those two, we're left with seven. You see the seven dots, four on one, three on the other, seven vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points, and 12 pedestrian conflict points between our six crosswalks, two at each crosswalk. Again, 38 and 28 going to 7 and 12. It's a significant decrease in the, in these conflict points. Speeds are going to be much lower. So on the design, so you know, we went through our standard design process for roundabouts. We looked at vehicle paths. We simulated those paths through the intersection, make sure it's large enough to handle vehicles. This is a standard sedan-sized vehicle. So you can see that center island, no vehicles are having to use that center island. Kind of missing one approach here, but we did run it. But you'll see the center islands are, there's no lines which represent the wheel tracking, having to mount up on that, which is great. So we've sized these based on this vehicle. And then we got the dimensions of your fire department's largest truck. So this, you'll see on the Avalon Canyon Road, on the bottom in the center, so you have a fire truck coming and going, going to all the directions. And you'll see that center island, you'll see wheel tracking. So that's exactly what they're for, is large vehicles like this would just travel right over the top of them. But they would have a slight lip to them, so smaller vehicles wouldn't be enticed to mount up on them. Will not be a rolled curb. It will be a shorter lip by the fire truck, no problem just mounting on top of those. They'll have a structural element to them so that those large vehicles can mount up and make their turn. I was going to point out, I haven't been pointing to you, the bus stop. You'll see the bus stop, we've shifted it from the center, between Sumner and Eucalyptus to east of Eucalyptus, because we didn't want to have the bus stop right in the area where we're having that crosswalk, that center crosswalk. Okay, so we've done the large vehicle design, standard vehicle design. Just a pan-out view showing our new sidewalks, which again, Brian will be talking about. So as I went through my checklist of what we needed to do for the design, I think we've met all those. We've created an intersection that have more consistent travel paths, not a wide variety, as you saw in the video. Consistent lower speeds, narrowing Tremont Street, standard crosswalk markings and sidewalks, removing the grade and the apron will be dealt with in the design. Just really more well-defined points of entry and exit to the intersection, I think, is key. Move the bus stop. We would be accommodating all vehicles. We have pedestrian pathways, standard crosswalks for them to cross at. Bicyclists, we all, the vehicles will be traveling at a slower speed, so bicycles have an easier time getting through the intersection. But the thing we open up here is the opportunity for beautification. So that's where Brian's going to take over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Brian Hannigan with RRM Design Group. Nice to see you all tonight. It's a really great opportunity and a neat project. And when they contacted me, they said, "Oh, we're going to do two roundabouts." And I'm thinking, "Great, we'll put plants in the middle, we'll do artwork." And they said, "Well, it has to be mountable." So that took all the plants out of the middle, but...
That took the art project, too.
So interestingly enough, on the design, we started looking at ways we can make it still artistic in the center circles and still be mountable. So that's something I'll talk about here in a short moment in the next slide. But this is just the overall view of the landscaped areas as Steve was presenting, how the roundabouts are laid out. It gives us more landscaped parkway areas, and you can see those in kind of the darker green. The trees are just represented in the green round circles that you see there. And in the concept, we're just showing all the places that we can get trees in there to start looking at shade and beautification of the street. There's also existing palm trees and other trees that will stay in the project that we also want to work around and work with. So I'm going to go to the zoomed-in view real quickly. One of the things we started looking at was, we had the five-way intersection, which is kind of always an odd shape. And I really like a chino derms there. Sea urchins and sea stars, they have five arms, so it just kind of interestingly worked with the layout. So we're looking at maybe doing a pattern that is either mosaics, which can be driven on, and if done right, you can drive over and over them, and they do just fine. Perhaps glow-in-the-dark concrete, chips in the concrete, so maybe we have a glow at night, and then fade off into the middle of the night, absorbing the sunlight. And then also potentially getting lights in the center of the, of the roundabout that would just give a glow at night. Those would be mountable lights. They have them for vehicle-rated lights. Since we can't do any vertical elements, maybe light could be part of that element that night that might make it interesting and kind of beautify that intersection. Also, if you look around the edges at the crosswalk, there are patterns that we can show in the splitter islands, and we're looking at pavers in there, or again, some other patterns to kind of bring out the urchin shell patterns that are, that are found in the urchin shells. And then potentially do pavers in the center or concrete or another pattern there. Those are all things we kind of want to explore when we do the public outreach and with the stakeholders and with you all. But this is sort of the idea that we had for creating kind of an interesting look to the intersection. So you can see there's sidewalks added around and access points from the sidewalks, and we get those larger planter areas. We're just looking at all the plants around town. We want to go with native and non-native drought-tolerant plants, flowering plants and trees. So we'll utilize a lot of what's around. So we'll utilize a lot of what's around, maybe bring things from the botanic garden from Front Street, so it kind of ties it in. As we just zoom back out, we have sidewalks going on, adjacent to the city property, which don't currently have sidewalks, so that'll run along Avalon Canyon Road on the east side. And then we also are extending the concrete sidewalks or paving sidewalks along Tremont Street on the south side. So that would give more pedestrian access to the crossings. Also, the bus stop that Steve had mentioned, we're trying to look at ways to slow the traffic as it comes into the roundabout, and we put the bus stop further back. And then the sidewalk that goes over Eucalyptus Avenue, that would, we want to continue the sidewalk paving there. We'd still have a mountable curb, so you could still get emergency access through to Eucalyptus, but that would extend the sidewalk and make it more pedestrian, instead of coming down and then going up again on that sidewalk. All the sidewalks that are shown, or the walkways and planters shown in front of the two houses, we would be able to extend, redo those sidewalks to match the other sidewalks in the area, and the access points to the crosswalks. So this gives a great opportunity for a lot more planting areas, helping to calm traffic as it's going through, really make it a great place for pedestrians to walk through and bikes, and all the different types of vehicles going through the intersection. And that is the end of that. Thank you.
So happy to entertain any questions for...
Okay.
Well, okay, I got it. Nobody's saying anything.
We're going to wait till the next round, right?
Yeah, but, but...
We're going to wait till the next round.
Yes, I'm, when, I appreciate you, because I was thinking, "Oh, my God, there's public art funds, we could put something really cool in the middle of those roundabouts," and that doesn't look like, but there is arts money, so maybe when you're talking mosaic and whatever those other concepts be, that would be grant money that could help fund that, which would be awesome. And in terms of, just real quick, in terms of, so this has nothing to do with the channel or anything. That's a whole other project at a different time with different monies, and this is just the roundabout.
So you're talking the culvert that's going through the middle of the intersection? It will actually relocate the culvert down lower.
Oh, okay.
And we have done hydraulic studies already, and we were confident that we could make that happen, so...
That's how you get all that grading you were talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the details that we'd be working with the public on.
Yeah. I think it's great.
Well, that's good.
Comments in the community quickly?
Good start.
No, okay.
Okay, so what we're asking, should we continue on?
Yes.
Yes.
Onward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works usually doesn't get applause like that, do they? Thank you very much. And can we, that little 30-second video or whatever that you have with the cars going fast, can we put that on our website? I think that's pretty cool.
A little presentation on the website.
Oh, okay.
We also have the time-lapse video that was done years ago.
That was, I love that. Okay. Where are the announcements and written communication?
I have no written communication, and I don't have any announcements.
Okay. Department head reports.
So Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, report for this meeting. Beach sand will be delivered and spread on the beaches Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. So by the end of the week, hopefully, we'll have our beaches at brand-new beach sand, like we did last year. We're completing the rail repairs, so we're, you know, you'll see us pouring the concrete in completing those repairs. We're systematically working on the concrete repairs, like you saw us on Third Street, where we did a lot of repairs, sidewalk curbs, so all those little kind of nicks and humps and, you know, potential trip and falls, working systematically right now down by the waterfront, trying to work our way through those areas where our visitors are going to be within, you know, they are right now, but they're going to be higher numbers of them soon. The Mole Phase One environmental document is going to be reviewed and hopefully approved tomorrow at Planning Commission. So that's a big step for that project. And remember, Phase One is the structural repairs to the concrete on the wharf. It's not the building on top, that's Phase Two. And then we have a workshop for recycling trash receptacles that we talked about last council meeting, that's tomorrow at 4:00 to 6:00 here at the council chambers, you know, prior to the Planning Commission.
Oh, great.
Any questions?
And the public's invited us for the 4:00 to 6:00 trash can meeting?
Absolutely, we want them there.
Where'd you girls have planned for tomorrow night? Hey.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff. I just wanted to bring you up to speed, our sister agency, LA County Fire Department, is in town this week and next week with heavy equipment. You may see and hear them up on the fire breaks and the motorways doing clearance, and they're also going to have a hand crew in town the following week, just tying in places where they can't get heavy equipment, too. So you may see and hear them.
Great.
Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sure you guys have been out around through town, have noticed that we got the swim lines in, and swim floats in, and Dan's happy that we got his outrigger float in. And the inflow tomorrow will be going in tomorrow morning about 8:00, 9:00. So, and then we'll also put in the club dinghy docks tomorrow afternoon. So we're moving right along. We got a little slow at the beginning here, but we had a lot of maintenance that we had to take care of, so. Any questions?
No, we're all ready for Memorial Day.
Bring it on.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, JJ.
Just a couple of things. I attended the fourth in a series of workshops today on climate action plans. The COG got some funding for cities to, for them to develop a toolkit that we can use to help track what we do to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, so that was really exciting. Our three favorite projects are going really well. One thing we've had some questions about is the height down at the Vons store, so they are going to be bringing in a certification that they're meeting the height that they're supposed to. And the last thing is that I don't want to promise you that you'll be buying your Thanksgiving turkey at Vons, at the new Vons, but they're hoping to stay on schedule, and we'll see some good things happening at the end of the year. So, any questions for me?
No, thank you.
I'm going to put my order in now for a prepackaged turkey dinner with all the fixins, right? Just a couple of things to follow up with some of the great things that are happening in the Bay. We are going to kick off our Avalon Day in the Bay program on Friday, the first. It'll be our first weekend with the inflatables in the Bay. So we're going to run some activities for the kids from 3:00 to 5:00 after school, from 2:00 to 5:00 after school, younger kids first, and the older kids after that. And then, just a little bit of update, we have been operating the teen center for about a year and a half now, and we have gone hand-in-hand with Avalon Community Church to try and bring that standard up a little bit in that room down there. So Matt Quazada, who is running the day-to-day, Wednesdays, Fridays, Saturdays out there with the kids, we're getting 20 to 25 kids, has gone out and started some soliciting for some donations. Our goal is between $18,000 and $20,000 to paint and carpet and new furnishings, and a new ping-pong table, and Playstation, and new lighting, and just really fix it up and make it a kind of a modern-looking teen center. He had a great vision for it. He has raised $13,000 to date. We've got some great contributors in the community for this, and I'll share a little bit more as we get the rest of it. And I think we've got our sights on another six of that, so we'll be really close here in the next, next couple of weeks. So, really neat project, it's going to be great for the kids. Our next goal is, we've had a lot of the boys come out, we're going to try and push to try and get a little more of a female program going there, so that'll be our next push with that. So we're really looking forward to seeing that come to fruition.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, do you want to report on paddling last Saturday?
We paddled last Saturday. We took 28 paddlers, it was our largest group to date, which was great, to San Diego for a Crystal Pier. Of the 28, we had 11 of them that were first-time paddlers. Most of us were first-time paddlers last year, but it was great to have another group kind of come up. We had five teams participate. A novice women's team that did really well for their first event, a mixed team that did fairly well for theirs. We had a women's open group that did outstanding. They came in fourth out of about 13 teams, so just off of the podium, and they were kind of struggling last year. So it looks like they've really come together this year and going to be a competitive group, so it'd be great to see that continue to develop. Paul and I in an old man's group, we pulled a third, which was nice, so we got a medal for that. And then we had an open men's group that came in second, second in their division, it was second overall in about 21 total canoes. And so we've got a nice competitive group there as well. So, yeah, a lot of fun. June 2nd is our next one in Marina Del Rey. We are actually, and the next Tuesday, we're hosting a high school paddling orientation meeting. We're going to try and get, now that baseball's done and softball's done and some of the high school sports, try and get a collection of the students at the high school to come out and get that program off the ground this year.
Congratulations, that's awesome, and to all the paddlers out there.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor of the Council, I was trying to come up with something fun and exciting that we do in finance, but we count numbers. I can report that revenues and expenditures are pretty much on target with the budget, so that's good news.
Yeah.
We're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, and we have budget presentations and hearings scheduled for June, and we'll have a lot to talk about then. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
That budget study session will start June 5th at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and then, again, that evening, it will be on the agenda.
Right. City manager report?
I really don't have anything this evening, Mayor.
The attorney, probably not. Hey, what? The council member report. Would I like to start?
I have nothing.
Because you've been on...
I've been on.
Good for you.
I'll go. Not much, really. But I just want to thank all the city crews. I get up pretty early in the morning and go down for coffee and stuff, but, you know, I've been around watching them all, and they all seem to be working pretty hard and getting things ready. There isn't much trash I see laying around the side of the sidewalks. I see from the Public Works, to the Harbor, to the Fire, to every agency that the city has, I think the city workers are doing a good job, and just want to give them a little kudos, including the girls in the office here, too. Everybody seems to be working pretty hard. I know we're going to start getting busy here pretty soon, and hopefully we'll keep it up. So that's all I got to say.
That was very nice, Richard.
That was very nice, very nice. I ditto that. I will be attending a stakeholders' meeting this Thursday, sponsored by Edison, discussion on water, and then my next other public meeting is Gateway City's Council of Government, which I will be continuing as our representative for on Wednesday, June 6th.
Madam, I forgot. This weekend I will be at Contract Cities in the desert.
Oh, good.
One of them, please, one of them will be there.
Thank you. Okay. I'll be at the stakeholders' meeting as well, and the COG that's coming, when are they coming, Daryl?
15th.
June 15th and 16th.
Right. I'll be here one of those two days. Also, I attended the second short-stab program that the Long Beach Unified School District is doing with the kids. It's held at the courthouse. They bring over people from LBUSD to work with troubled youth and try to get them to realize what they're doing wrong and maybe change some behaviors. That was very good. And then yesterday, there was a Safe and Civil meeting up at the school with the principal teachers and a number of people from the community that have been concerned with the youth of Avalon and their demeanor at school. So they're being, the school's being very open and having input from the parents, and I think the bottom line is that parents and children need consequences for their actions. That will be a way to kind of turn them around, so we're, we're working diligently on that, and that's, that's good news. Okay. Oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Good evening, Mark Taska, 3:30, Clarissa, and presently President of the Avalon Hospital Auxiliary. I'm here to give you kind of an overview. April 15th, 1966, a lady by the name of Dorothy Abbott set up a card table by the entrance to the arcade across from the Glenmore. Since then, it's grown, and we're happy to say we give abundance amount of money and services to the hospital. But that aside, we get demoralized when we have the hospital auxiliary used as a trash dump. So I'm kind of here to spread the word, if anybody is watching, that we don't take electronics, we don't take soiled mattresses, we, I'm serious, we don't take clothes that have sweat in trash bags, waterlogged books. It all goes in the trash. And then when it's left there as a good donation, and if it is good, by the time the morning comes, it's already been rifled through, and then it's on the ground, and then it's trash anyway. So spread the word, keep it in mind that donate all you want, except for those items, when we're open. We're glad to take them. Thank you.
Very, yeah. Point's very well made.
I just want to chime in that I personally see Mark six of seven days of week going through the product and having to clean up and whatnot, and I applaud you for all of the time that you donate to the auxiliary. So thank you for your comments.
Other oral communication? The consent calendar.
We have eight items on the consent calendar this evening. The last two will be, items are the city council acting as a successor agency. First item is actions from May 8th, regular city council meeting. Number two is warrants for a total disbursement of $1,371,511.23. Third item is to adopt the ordinance amending Section 2-1.01 of Title II, which is changing the city council time to 5:00 PM. This will be, that will be the second hearing today or reading of it, so we're adopting it. Number four is to accept the proposal for Moffett Nichols and award the contract to proceed with preparing an amendment to the City of Avalon Local Coastal Program to address sea level rise. Number five is to approve the final parcel map for conversion of a duplex at 155 and 157 Olive Street to condominiums. Number six is to approve the application for a transportation permit provided by Catalina Backcountry Incorporated. The two successor agency items are, is to adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal year 2017/18 third-quarter treasures report, and number eight is to adopt the resolution authorizing investment of monies in the following local agency investment funds, which is LEAF, accounts the City of Avalon, and successor agency to the ACI and the Housing Authority.
Council?
Obviously, I will pull Item 6 and step away.
Okay.
And then abstain from the Chet's Hardware on the warrants list.
I will abstain from Item 1, since I wasn't here. Sorry.
Make it easy, Richard, make the motion.
So, go ahead.
Where are we making the motion on?
2 through 5 and 7?
Okay. Motion that we recommend... That recommendation?
2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8.
And 8, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? Item number 1?
All 1s.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the actions, item number 1.
Second. All in favor?
3 eyes, Marshall, Cassidy, Hernandez.
Didn't vote.
Oh, he couldn't vote.
Oh, he abstained, he's abstained.
Yeah, he was abstained.
Okay, and then item...
On Item 6.
Okay. Ole moved stuff on Item 6.
I just had one question on Item 6. Did I read that we're going to, are you getting another vehicle?
We are actually, we were originally permitted through the Conservancy for two vehicles in the interior. We will be required to replace this Yukon. It's barely, barely making it. So we are going to replace this one with a new vehicle, but we do have the ability to have a transferable pass with the Conservancy that we can move that pass to one vehicle at a time.
Okay. That's what I thought I read. Okay.
Okay. There was a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Call for the eye.
Call for the eye.
Prejudge it?
Thank you. All ayes.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you. Item number nine?
Item number nine on general business is a request for a lemonade stand encroachment permit on Crescent Avenue. The application was submitted by Jerry Dunn. I believe he's in the audience if he would like to address the council.
Denise, I'm going to abstain from this item due to a financial conflict of interest.
You sell lemons? Jerry, did you want to come up and speak first?
Good evening. Jerry Dunn, 133 Upper Terrace. I think I've peppered most of you with quite a few emails over the last year, starting in July of last year, when this idea first came up, and we postponed the idea primarily just because we got too busy in last summer, and we thought we could revive it this year. I kind of want to start with sort of the big picture to try to describe what I'm trying to do. Avalon is sort of small-town America. I mean, like a lot of small towns, they have situations that come upon them where, whether they have manufacturing or steel mills or whatever, that shut down and don't really, the town starts to deteriorate, this town starts to kind of decrease, people start to leave. And then, you know, lo and behold, somebody comes along and decides they can take that old warehouse and turn it into a brewery. And the brewery starts to be successful because someone's taken a risk, they've taken a chance, they've invested money. And then when the brewery's successful, somebody else comes along and they open a cafe, and then things start to grow. Well, we kind of have a few of those steel mills. I think you're familiar, you know, with C.C. Gallagher, Picnic Fry, Legends, Mr. Ning, Zest, Villa Portofino, Shipwreck Jolies, Olaf's. All these are gone, and they're not coming back real soon. Someday, there'll be someone that'll go in there, and they'll reinvest, and they'll have an idea, and then hopefully that that'll, you know, resurface again. But we need to create interest and newness for the visitors, so when they come back, they see fresh change and improvements. And we need to do that soon, because these people are coming. The Island Company's done a great job with the Zip Line, the Walk in the Trees Adventure, Descanso, Cabanas, and the Cyclone Boat, to name a few. And it's helping. But I think in a, in a small way, some of these things, I had a customer come in and compliment our new Latitude 33 store, that they really liked the new store, and that made me realize that this was a customer that was coming back to Avalon. They had been in the old store, they came to the new store, they liked the new and improved. So people recognize change, they recognize newness, and they seek that out. Doing business in Avalon is not easy. It requires a lot of things that you normally wouldn't have to do, from housing. Employees are difficult to find, the seasonality of it. 15 years ago, we built housing. This was long before housing was required. We didn't do any smoke-and-mirrors presentation where we could tell you that what we were doing wasn't going to require more employees, and so we didn't need housing. We just went out and built it. We now have about 10 units that are strictly for employees, we charge a minimal rent, so they have a nice affordable place to live. But that's expensive to maintain, so we are constantly working to improve our business and try to do a better job and increase our business. I just hope that, you know, you try not to be afraid of change, improvements, and sometimes you need to stand side-by-side with these people and take that risk. The permit I'm asking for, I know I've heard a lot of people say and worry, that even the staff is concerned that this will set a precedent, that by allowing this, one item is going to set a precedent, then you're going to have a flood of people come in asking for a similar consideration. If that was the case, then the photo booth that was approved in May of 17 would have done that, and I wouldn't need to be here. That precedent would have been set. But every permit requires the scrutiny by the City Council. And I feel that the same findings that were given the photo booth, specifically Amanda's comments in the staff report for the photo booth, has said, it's, and I quote here, "It's staff's opinion that this would offer a positive addition to the many amenities and amusements that we offer our visitors," end quote. I feel that that's what I'm trying to create here. And if the city has concerns, maybe they can come up with standards that they feel comfortable with, with this type of encroachment. You know, possibly things like, or that are allowed one per block, or something along those lines that would help set up guidelines. I spoke to Pam, even knowing that she wasn't going to be here, to try to get her input, and she suggested looking at other cities and what they have done. And so I did try to do some research there, but there's really not much out there in the form of carts. Most everything is, the cities have as far as regulations are for food trucks, because that seems to be the new, biggest, latest, greatest thing on the horizon, that the food trucks are the up-and-coming in most cities, and that carts really aren't a consideration for them. I've talked to the fire chief. The fire chief has said that he has no problem with this, he has no problem with the location. I've talked to Bob in Public Works Department, and he has no opposition to the idea. He says as long as it's well-kept, it's not a problem. I've talked to Yoshi, that is closest retailer to the location other than myself, and she said it, she thought it looked cute, and that it might even, we just thought that it might even bring more customers to her door by having something, activity going on close by. I think, you know, that, you know that it'll be professionally maintained. Knowing my other businesses, you can gladly talk to any of my landlords, from the Island Company into Roy Rose, to Helen Berry at Avalon Bay Company, to Snoke Harbor Inn with Lynn and Cameron. All of those will tell you that I've done a spectacular job maintaining and running those businesses, and am constantly upgrading and taking care of them. That it's not, this cart would not be manned by someone, you know, chewing gum and texting on their phone. That'll be clean and professionally operated, probably from around 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., then it's rolled and stored. It isn't something that's just going to be left there and covered with a tarp or whatever. It's going to be put away at night, so there's not an eyesore to anybody when it's not being used. This will also allow me to do some of the benefits that I've tried to do in the past and haven't been able to, because I don't really have a tool to do them with. The museum, as an example, asked me to come and serve free ice cream for their solar eclipse gathering that they had. And I was able to do it, but I had to kind of do it with an ice chest and a dolly. That wasn't the best tool to use, but we were able to pull it off. But this would actually allow me to do more of that. Lastly, I know that it's one of those things where everyone's like the what-if, and what have we not thought of, what could possibly go wrong? And so, I'm, I know with the photo booth, this was something that was approved with a three-year encroachment permit. It's a permanent building with electrical provided to it. This is a temporary building that's rolled out in the morning and rolled back in the evening. So I'm thinking that if there's a concern, that maybe it's a temporary permit, that let's try it. Let's tip our, dip our toe in the water and see if this is something that works. I don't think that anyone really needs to be in fear of this, that it's something that's going to create chaos or whatever. And if the city, for whatever reason, decides that I can't solve a particular problem that they've noticed, they just ask me to go away, and I'm gone. So it doesn't really, it allows this opportunity to exist without a long-term commitment. If it turns out to be successful, and there's not a problem, obviously, yes, I'd like to see that permit extended. I just hope that you will consider allowing me to try to create another visitor experience that the people coming to Avalon can enjoy, because we've lost so many other ones. And our goal is always, with any of our businesses, is always to try to exceed the visitor expectation, and that's what, one of the things we're trying to do here. I hope that you can see your way clear to give me the chance to do that, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
I always have questions. Have you already purchased the cart?
Say again?
Have you already purchased the cart?
No.
What's the turnaround time to get the cart?
Four to six weeks.
Okay. One of the comments you made is that everybody's reinvesting, and everybody is reinvesting in their businesses, but not on city streets, is the difference with every example that you gave. And I know earlier today, we talked about the kind of feel we want in the City of Avalon and on Front Street and whatever, and I don't know what our final resolve was at the end of the day this morning. Were we going to be, I hope your memory's better than mine, Denise.
Only that staff was going to continue evaluating the applications as they came in and proceeding the way we do, and if we did a denial, that they could appeal it. You never really got to how you wanted the feel to be of the.
Okay.
This is why I presented photos to you folks, to show you that it's a fun, upscale, good-looking design. If somebody comes in and applies for a hot dog on a stick permit, you have the opportunity to decide, ah, maybe that's not really the look and feel that we want. This is something of refreshing, easy access, where they can grab and go.
Okay, so, the request is for a 30 by 41 or a 44 by 64. Okay. That's not all the space you will be needing. You're going to be needing more like what?
I assumed, and we spoke about this, that it would be double the size of the square footage of the actual cart, because obviously you're going to have the person behind it operating it. So, I mean, if there's a minimum, or there's some number that you guys are comfortable with, I'm willing to discuss that.
And then, little things like, okay, that, if we did something like that, it would be on a square footage basis, the 350 or whatever it is, and then there would be the need for trash? That, since it's its own little business, we would assess some kind of a trash fee for the additional trash, perhaps?
If that's what you think would be reasonable, I'm, I'm.
And it does need electricity?
Does not require electricity.
Okay. And are you interested in considering any other locations?
Yes, and it's funny you mention that, because I, can I?
Sure.
Offer you another picture here.
Jerry, why don't you talk about how you freeze it, and that there's no drainage and all that other?
Yeah, it's what's called a cold plate system. And what it is, is that it's plugged in at night, and it freezes, and then it keeps things frozen for 12 hours after that. That's why it doesn't require electricity. I've been talking to the Health Department pretty consistently, because one of the things that I was concerned about was that this would require the sink, the hot water, the disposal of all of that. I've been verbally told by Marco Espinoza, who actually happened to be the inspector of Scoops when we opened, that this would not require it, because it's not a milk product, it's not a food, it doesn't require that. I have asked him to give that to me in writing, and I've been unsuccessful so far. He has consistently asked me to apply to the Health Department for that application, or bring the cart in, and we'll inspect it. So I've explained to him that I can't really do either of those until I overcome the obstacle of the encroachment permit. And then once I've done that, I'd be more than happy to complete the application, and then if I receive the permit from the Health Department, then I would go out and purchase the cart. One of the things in listening to the meeting, I think it was a few weeks ago, when you guys were talking about food trucks, is that it requires a kind of a catering backup to it, where this would have that. It's being maintained by an established Health Department-approved location. The product is being produced in that location, so I think if that question does come up with the Health Department, that it shouldn't be an obstacle for me.
I'm not excited about having it on Crescent, in anywhere on Crescent Street, personally. I would consider that property that's kind of around by where the photo booth is, where that palapa is, and, so you're taking people, so it's not congested, they would be going somewhere else that doesn't have a lot of congestion, just like the Hawaiian ice or the ice that the Uptons had. It was nice to have something like that somewhere that's not in the already congested area.
If you look at any of the locations that I've suggested, I mean, whether it be at the end of the Serpentine Wall or the one that I just gave you, I'd say 90% of the time, those aren't congested, even in the busiest part of the summer. Yes, if there's a special event, there's Fourth of July, all those kind of events when they go on. And I'm even willing to accept that, okay, you can't do it on these holidays, or whatever it might be. But most of the time, and especially the end of that Serpentine Wall where I've looked at, I mean, the most you ever see congested there is a couple people sitting on the bench reading the paper. I mean, it's just not a busy location.
Okay. And I see that little thing, and it's sitting right next to an ashtray and a bench, and then you've got a bar, and I don't think that's kid-friendly. And that's why, personally, I would be willing to try it on some kind of a basis if it was not on that part of Front Street, because I know how busy the front of your store is, and it's Scoops, and they're lined up all the way. So now you've got them lined up going this way, and then you're going to have people lined up this way, and where are they going to stage themselves? They're going to be standing in a straight line here?
It's interesting you say that, because the reason I have a line at Scoops is because people are trying to make a decision on whether they want Cool Mint Chip or they want Nutella Hazelnut. When someone walks in and they say they want frozen lemonade, oh my gosh, it's like a little yippee goes on inside me, because I can walk over and go boom, 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 done. It is such a quick transaction, that it is miniscule in the amount of time where the decision-making process, and it's very frustrating for me, because we're trying to constantly battle, how can we move these people through quicker, because that's the only way that I can increase the business. We've done signage, we've done menus, we're doing all these different things. With this product, it's seconds.
And there's a cash box that people will give you credit cards?
We're not going to do credit cards, only because we don't want to have the hesitation of the six seconds it takes to go bounce off the satellite and come back. And then you would be surprised how many people want a receipt for a $5 purchase. And it's just so frustrating. So I'm, with this particular situation, exactly for the reasons that you're describing, we're not going to do that. 50% or more of our sales at Scoops are done with a credit card for less than $6. I'm completely blown away sometimes when I see people hand the credit card to me for a $4 transaction. But I'm telling you, greater than 50% of the people that come through that door do it. And I've talked to Coney Island and asked them, how do they, you know, how do you guys do cash-only, you know? When someone just says, I mean, I've had people, when the internet goes down, or they're standing there with a dripping ice cream, and we're going, well, we can't take your credit card. Well, I don't have $4.
Right.
I mean, it's just so surprising for me. But for exactly those reasons, I'm going to streamline it, so it's quick, fast, easy. It's a simple $5 sale. There's no change, there's no tax, there's no counting back. It's quick and easy.
Well, if they give you a $10 bill, they'll be counting that 5. But again, I'm kind of adamant about not on Crescent Street. I'd like to see it so we can extend the experience past where we're the most congested. That's just my input. And I don't know how long I'd be willing to try this, but.
Can you consider this, any of the locations I've given you on a temporary basis, so I can try to, I mean, I can't guarantee you that what you're saying won't happen, but I'm about 99% sure it will not.
And then everybody else that comes up with something's going to want a trial for that as well. And I guess if we're talking about how we want to lay out our city, I say, I believe it's congested enough as it is, because you're not talking just this space. Now you're talking double that space, as you've stated.
No, no, behind it, is what I'm saying. The space.
And that is a sidewalk. So now you're on our sidewalk. So now you're on our sidewalk. That's our sidewalk, is it not, in front of the store? Yeah. So you're gonna have them go coming this way and that way. And I just don't, wouldn't like to see the flow messed up. It's just me, gentlemen. Well, I don't, number one, I don't know if you're gonna consider it at all. And number two, I don't know what you're thinking about what I'm saying. So, somebody else speak.
Well, you bring up the photo booth. And if you look in the record, I voted against that because I don't believe there should be commercial activity taking place on public property. And I haven't necessarily changed that idea. It doesn't matter where you put it in the city property for me.
So my feeling is, is I hate to bump, try to, we got staff recommendation. And I don't think it's good policy for us to go against staff recommendations, so. And that's where I stand with that. That's just normally what we do.
Well, I think that Denise will tell you this, that any, she mentioned to me that anything on city property, she has to recommend negatively. Anything.
And that's, with staff recommendation, that's...
As I explained, at some point, if you want to see newness, you want to see change, you wanna see people have additional things to be able to experience when they come here, you have to take that risk. You have to take that step out of the bubble and take a chance along with someone that's going to spend the money and put in the hard work to make it happen. That's, at some point, you have to make that choice.
Well, and I understand, and I am willing to, but I'm not willing to do it where you want it to be. So that would be my compromise is you put it in a different location. And it would be something that would be further down. Again, you've got all of those kids that are playing basketball. You've got all that activity down there. You've got people, I mean, it is very visible. They're gonna see you coming and going. And they will stop, they won't just come and go. Okay?
No, I mean, you'd...
But it's...
I am willing to consider that, but you'd have to get one of your two co-council people to feel that that's an opportunity. And then possibly through the guidance with city staff, we can come to some...
Well, and I don't know, wait, can we ask why she had to accuse herself?
For a monetary conflict of intent.
Oh, okay. Well, you can either wait until, and we can put it on the agenda when the other councilperson returns. I don't know how, but then it looks like it's gonna be a two-two. Can I count votes like that?
I'd like to make...
Right now, I don't know what...
I would like to make a recommendation that we uphold the staff recommendation.
How about we just continue it?
To June 5th?
There you go.
Better than dead?
And the continuing it is to confer on a better location? Is that what the...
Well, right now you've got, doesn't, right now, and I don't know if they will change their minds. That's, you've got a lot of work to do, but...
I've been working on this guy on the right for months.
Oh, okay.
Years, years.
Okay.
So, but I think that he's possibly opening the door slightly. So I'm willing to continue it. If I can get some input from either, that will give me some idea of where everybody is happy.
Well, I'm happy with it along the Mall and Morp across from Pancake Cottage, for lack of a better word, where we have that palapa where people comfortably sit and eat it and enjoy, and there's all the seating by the basketball court. And they can carry it to the beach, so it's not far away from anything. They can eat it up in the city park. And they can stand in line while they go to Scoops to try the ice cream as well.
And would only concur with that.
The only benefit to that location is the limited amount of space. So there would be limited opportunities for other people to come in and request additional opportunities like that. So in that particular case, it's, we can consider it.
I didn't know if that was a yes or a no, sorry.
That was a...
A maybe?
Yeah, if we get a plot plan and if we run it by city staff. Because I think, I'm concerned about opening up all public property towards vending of some sort. Whether it be push carts.
It's not opening that door. If that door was opened by giving an encroachment permit, then the photo booth already opened that door.
And I voted against that.
It what?
I voted against the photo booth.
Well, no, I'm just saying that it was approved. It's got an encroachment permit. It's a permanent building requiring electricity and totally waterproof. And for three years.
Right.
Okay, so just a couple of procedural things. We have a motion to continue that has not had a second. And then we also haven't taken any public comment if there's anybody else here to speak on the item. So we've heard from the applicant at this point.
Do you wanna hold yours, whoever, until we hear from the gentleman?
Sure.
That be you?
Hello, I'm Gene from 18 Canyon Terrace. We own multiple businesses, just as other people do. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for wanting to keep our town a certain way. You know, we're kinda new at business, only 15 years at the coffee deal. But ever since day one, they've had these wonderful backpacks that I can carry with a pump, the cups, the sugar, the creamer. And I can walk right onto the beach or right to the mall, so people don't have to walk. I also have a great idea that they have this sun spray thing that I've seen in other countries where you go to the beach and I forgot my sunscreen. So the guy comes around with his coffee cream and you just stand there and spray sunscreen on yourself. Those both move around, they're not in a central location. If I did have a central location or if this business did, is that painted on a sidewalk? Or is there some sort of a barrier that says, this is my central location? I can't put my beach towel there? Or, you know, like, you know, like you would for a red parking...
Like Eric's on the pier that says...
Yeah, the yellow deal, yeah, that kind of a thing. So there's just a couple of things. I mean, I've seen different cotton candy people doing things and whatever. And as far as the lines out the door, gosh, good God, we all have lines out the door. It's awesome. So, you know, a dollar coffee's quick. Yeah. So make it as quick as you can or your frozen yogurt or whatever you have, as quick as you can to get out the door. But, I mean, if everybody had a line out the door, got to have another locale. And I, you know, I'm all for it. I'm all for the ice cream bicycle dingalingaling and ride all the way around to the casino as the guys are, you know, having their beer out there, whatever they do out there. And, you know, here's your ice cream while you're fishing. So, I mean, there's a lot of great ideas and I applaud that. So if we're gonna go in that direction, sign me up. I'll be first in line. We've had plenty of ideas. We've been tried for two years and did a bring the coffee and the burritos out to the boaters. And we had to go through the harbor and you guys and pay different fees and all that. So I'm fine with paying those fees too, so. Yeah, just thanks for thinking about it and keep me posted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now what's the motion? Motion taken, there's, police a motion to continue? Is there a second? All second. I thought, didn't know if you were just doing this.
So we're clear, I'm bringing this back at June 5th for the same staff report or is to work with Jerry on a different location over by the photo booth?
I think you, if you wanna keep your staff report the same, I think you can. I just think we need for other consideration where it would be and the true size of what it would be, where the trash can would be located, what fees would be established? Because I think trash should be a part of that. And maybe, and/or removal of their own trash. Well, they wouldn't know at the end of the day. But it will be impacted trash. I guess sewer and saltwater because after they drink that, they're gonna have to go to the bathroom in our public toilet. Yes.
Erin Hubink, 18 Canyon Terrace. I don't share the same enthusiasm my husband has for that, if that's how that came across. So I guess my concern is if this is really on the table, there has to be some sort of a selection that gives everybody the opportunity. Because as thorough as his presentation was, everyone has had those ideas. And I think that those of us that are paying rent, just like Jerry is on Front Street or, you know, whatnot to keep all of our businesses afloat throughout the year, even when it's raining and in the off-season when everyone isn't here. A lot of those cart-type of situations are a solution for, you know, when it's busier. So just considering, okay, can someone just come in for six months out of the year, put a permit in, they're good to go? Like, I think there's a lot more to consider than the size of the space and a trash can. So I'm concerned that just because he's bringing this up now, then he's first in line? Well, I don't, is there a lottery? Because now there's only five spaces throughout town that we're actually gonna pursue this with? Like, I think there needs to be a lot more thought put into this before it's just, we're gonna give this one a go and go from there. But...
I appreciate your commentary.
My opinion.
Yes, thank you.
So you have a motion to continue and a second?
Call for the vote?
Two ayes, Marshall Olson, one no, Hernandez, one abstention, Cassidy.
Back again, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. So item 10, we're talking about the beach sand on South Beach. So this item requests authorization to generate an RFP for engineering, environmental and permitting tasks to facilitate the dredging and beach sand replenishment on South Beach. So if you remember back in October of last year, council authorized, after we heard the sediment study, to continue on and to produce a technical memorandum that would be to address the details of the scope, cost and schedule and funding source to implement a deflection wall and also with the restoration dredging as part of the sand replenishment for South Beach. So that's almost completed, that task. The consultant was a little bit delayed because we were talking with, of course, Catalina Express with their needs and working with them. And so we had a workshop here with them in council chambers. And then we also, the consultant looked at some other alternatives like investigating what SpaceX barge was doing and the mooring system. So that's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. But it seems like from the results of the study and also what our consultant's telling us right now and also what we saw during this past winter, that we need to be sooner than later with the replenishing our beach sand. And so what we saw in this last winter is that it's detrimental to our seawall. Of course, we lost the sand as it had suction out and there was some erosion underneath the footing. And we keep on trying to address that. We're not able to find the bottom of that right now. So we go out there, we put some rocks, big, large rocks, boulders, concrete that together and then come up with some stabilizing fill. And then we put some sand on top of that. But really what needs to be done is we need to pave that sand back there. And when the sand is replaced, from what the experts tell us, is that the wave heights will be reduced. Every time that that wave hits that seawall, it's approximately double the height of whatever that seawall exposure is. So if there's seven walls of sea, seven foot of seawall exposed, then we probably get a 14-foot wave. If there was only two foot, then we'd get a four-foot wave. So that helps us actually. And but we also heard within the study that once that sand is replaced, it wouldn't be a permanent fix unless we put some structural repair because we've lost the groin walls in there. But we also heard that that happened, the erosion happened over time. And it wasn't just the wave action over many years that happened. It was also the way that the Catalina Express was operating in reverse. But it wasn't a single one of those that did it, it was the combination of those. So we're, what I'm trying to present right now is that I think in the short term that we can get this dredging, get the sand back. Because that sand is right down in our harbor, approximately 10 to 20 foot deep. And dredge that sand and bring it back up. And hopefully we can get the permit. So the permits are gonna take us six to nine months to be able to get Army Corps permit, get Coastal Commission, get Regional Water Quality Control Board, you know, at a minimum. So start working on those now because it seems like, from what we're seeing in our seawall, we need to do that sooner than later. But also looking forward is that we do have the Mall Phase 2 project. And we have, staff has been successful in getting additional grant funds that would look at some of those facilities like the floats. And, you know, so we would be looking as part of that design on the Mall to what to do with the floats for the next 20 years. Because when we get done with the Mall project, we wanna make sure that that is a multimodal facility that is renewed, but also would have the capacity for the next 20 years. So that's why I'm trying to decouple that piece, which is that structural improvement. Could be that groin wall, wherever that discussion leads us. Or it's the mooring of, on some new floats, redone floats. And so I think that that piece of the discussion is gonna take us a little while longer to come up with the right solution. But this part of the solution seems like a foregone conclusion. That's why I'm saying this, I'm asking you tonight whether we should just go out and get that RFP. And then once we get those proposals come in, and at that point in time also, we would have the finish of the discussion with the technical memorandum in front of you two. Just kind of taking a, kind of fast forward on this step.
No, that makes sense to me. Any questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve going out for the RFP for dredging and beach sand replenishment on South Beach.
Second.
Comment? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Thank you. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is the residential inspection program options. You've asked the planning director to come forward with some suggestions to start the conversation.
Hi, everyone. So we've kinda talked about this before, whether or not the city wants to implement a residential rental inspection program. There's a lot of cities out there that have these programs. Some of them are complaint-based and some of them are proactive. We looked at Los Angeles, Hayward, Berkeley, Palmdale, Lancaster, Sacramento and San Luis Obispo. And San Luis Obispo was one of the cities that's actually done away with their proactive inspection program and have gone strictly to a complaint-based program. It is a program that is costly because you needed staff in order to do that. The city of Avalon has probably about 700 rental units, believe it or not, that would fall under the, that fall outside the LA County's inspection obligations. So we want to find out from you if, how you want to proceed. If we wanna proceed forward with a proactive inspection program where you regularly schedule inspections for these properties, the property owner would pay for the inspection fee? Or do we want to enhance our complaint-based program where we respond to complaints, which is what we're doing now? Or we could have a program that's kind of half and half where you can request an inspection, you get certified, and if you pass, then you are allowed to self-certify. And it wouldn't do away with the complaint process, but it would enhance that. So we're here to get direction from you.
How many complaints do you get?
Maybe three or four a year.
And how do we follow up on that?
We, typically you go to the property, you inspect it, you determine what the issues are, determine if the complaints have weight. And then we work with the property owner to correct whatever deficiencies there are.
And what kind of standard, if you could think about what some of those complaints would be, what would they be?
Typical complaint, the, let's see, the hot water heater doesn't work. Well, you're required to have hot water. So they have to fix the hot water heater. We're not looking at going out to existing properties and requiring them to bring that property up to current building code. That's not, that would not be the purpose of this inspection. It's addressing health and safety habitability issues.
Yes.
So you can have a physical aspect of a property that doesn't meet current code, but it's not illegal. It doesn't affect the habitability. So it's... So, it's typically those type of issues. It's, you're supposed to have screens on the windows. Now, we, most people don't worry about that here because of our weather, but you're really supposed to have screens to keep little critters out of your house. So, there's some things like that.
Legally, I was just kind of wondering, so, who or whoever does it, where does it stand legally for the city to go on a private property to do inspections?
So, if you-
Is there a fine line, like say, the city, fire, or our building department went to follow up on a complaint?
Well, you would have designated inspectors-
Okay.
-who would do it. So, if you created a program, you'd adopt an ordinance, you would create the whole program and then you would have people authorized through that program to go ahead and do it.
To go ahead and do it.
But today, the building inspector's authorized.
Correct. Currently, it's your building inspector.
Yeah, to respond to complaints.
Right.
That's part of our, it's almost like a code enforcement.
Right. It falls in line with code enforcement. Because you're looking at, right now, we're looking at health and safety.
Sure, correct.
Right. Well, I don't believe there's enough people, people are, like it said in here, people are afraid of retaliation, so some of them won't complain.
And people get kicked out if you're going to complain. I mean, there's a possibility you could get kicked out, maybe the problem was a little worse than they thought, blah, blah, blah. Next thing you know, that you got to move out or you might not move in. So, there's a lot of gray areas there that people might not come forward-
Right.
...to legit complaints, which it sounds like. Because I know there's more than four or five places in doing, in working from the fire department side, but years ago, from that. And there's way more than that. And people are afraid of that, I think.
The downside of only having a complaint system is what you're talking about. People are afraid to complain. It's not like you can go, this place is a dump, I'm going to go down the street to that other apartment complex. That option is not available to us in Avalon. So, the good thing about having an inspection program, if we are able to fund it and get the staffing to do it, is then it's out of the hands of the tenant. It's an inspection program that the city is implementing, it applies across the board to everyone, you come in and you do the inspection and they pass and everything's all good and wonderful. It doesn't mean that people still can't bring up an issue if something is occurring, but it's, the burden's off the tenant. The challenge that we, as staff has talked about it, is we have an inspection checklist that says, we're going in to make sure the hot water heater works and that the toilet works and it's not leaking, all these basic things. And if you get inside the building and all of a sudden, you come across something that's not on your checklist, are some of our concerns, and Elizabeth may be able to answer this, is then what are, what are we supposed to do? Or, do we now have the right to follow up on a, an issue that wasn't on our checklist, but yet now we're aware of it?
You can't ignore it.
That's, that was some of our concerns. And there may be, there may be some-
It's public safety, then.
If it's a code issue and it's a public safety issue, you would likely have to follow up on it.
You have to follow up on that, right? And, you know, just being with the fire department, Chief Craig could probably speak on this better than I can. It's been a while since I've been in it, but it's just a lot of time involved in it and a lot of personnel. And it's real tight, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer would be. I don't know if we could contract out to somebody that does this over town for a living. An inspector might come over here and help us out with it. Either the fire department would have to hire someone, I don't know, but chief might be able to-
Well, I think-
-chime in on it a little bit.
I think, and I'll just make this one point and I'll let Mike speak, is in the initial launch of the program, it's going to be a little labor-intensive because-
Right.
-if you want to inspect all the properties at least once. And then, probably most of the properties are going to be in really good shape, they're not going to have any follow-up issues. And so, a lot of the cities that I looked at, if you pass your inspection, then you don't have to be inspected again for three or five years.
A couple of years.
So, it, it would be a little intense to get everyone inspected that first time, but then after that, it should be a little easier going forward. Some cities exempt units that are within a certain age. If they were constructed in the last five or eight years, then they feel like it shouldn't have, you know, wear and tear on it where you'd have those type of conditions.
Yeah.
Amanda made some terrific points. I just wanted to expand a little bit on one of the things that when we talk about the four or five complaints. Amanda, myself, the building inspector, another, one of the things that we routinely get are civil matters between renters and their landlord, where we receive a phone call and they say, the place I'm living is a death trap and if you need to come down here and inspect it. And, and we say, that's fine, we're happy to come down and inspect, inspect that, take a look and see if it's as bad as you say. However, understand, we give them an admonishment, that if it's as bad as you say, I may have to ask you, I may have to order you to leave your house and I'll have to red-tag your house. And, and all of a sudden, the situation isn't quite as dire as they painted.
Yeah.
So, Amanda touched on some great points about how, if you decided to go down this road, it would be, I envision a very labor-intensive, dedicated city person to, to run that and manage that program.
And I kind of think word of mouth, after, if we did it a certain direction, got to that point, the direction would be, people would word of mouth and get out, hey, they're coming out looking at houses now. And people might step it up and start fixing up their houses or their properties. It seems that, seems to be the way it rolls sometimes, but there's no guarantee on that either, though.
And my concern is the people that are just renting those rooms illegally.
Mm-hmm.
That will, how do we ever even find those? That's not, that's a tough one.
Well, one of the things that's interesting that I've learned over the past few years is that there are some homeowners who rent some of their property and they don't think they need a business license. So, we have, we have probably a few people in town, probably not that many, that rent, they're doing a, the, they're doing a nice thing, they're providing housing for people, but they don't realize that they're also supposed to have a business license. So, one of the things that almost all of these cities required in their program is every rental property had to register with the city. So, now, one, they all get a business license, two, you now know where they all are.
Right.
And it gives you an opportunity to go out and pursue an inspection program if that's what we want to do. We also have the added data because through our golf cart registration program, golf carts are registered to dwelling units. So, we have that data to kind of track, see where are all these vehicles registered? Some are owners, of course, but where they're registered. The second thing is our city subsidy program. You have to be a resident in Avalon, you have to live here so much a year in order to get a subsidy program. So, those addresses, yes, there's on occupied, but it'd also help us identify where those properties are. So, if it's something you want us to go forward with, and we'll do a little more research, come back, we'll need to figure out a fee, which would be the time to do that because we're looking at adopting fees for our next budget year, so.
Well, and then, Elizabeth, what does somebody have to, for, for this little check work, checklist that's here, I mean, I almost feel like I could go out and do that. I mean, so, and if, if this is even a self-inspection checklist, what kind of qualifications? I mean, I'm wondering if there's somebody, that whatever our guidelines be, then we pay them on a per-house ba, or a per-resident basis, on a, as a, on a contract person? And so, we don't have the staff person, we have the, could we do something like that?
So, yeah, you can use a consultant, you can use a contractor, there, I'm sure that there are companies that do this.
But I'm wondering, again, if, if Richard says, I know how to do this, I hate to use the word consultant and all those engineers and all those other terms, where you, they get paid $200, $250 to, you know, it's paid for by the landlord and that money just goes to them. And I don't know if we need a little bit because if we're having to do some kind of follow-up, but does it have to be some qualified, qualified somebody to do one of these checklists?
Not the neighborhood, I mean, that is, design a self-inspection.
I know. So, if people can self-inspect, I guess that's just, do we really need a professional inspector?
That's a, that's a call for you guys. I mean, you're gonna, if you are going to send someone out into people's homes, I would assume you would want someone with some basic knowledge of what they're looking for.
Right.
Some basic qualifications.
Yeah.
Right. Basic qualifications, but, but, okay.
So, they would have to send maybe that thing back to the city so we could follow up on, yeah, the checklist. Who's really follows up on that, on the self one?
Now, see, I wouldn't-
So, it'd have to be sent back to the city and then we get it and we say, okay, we want to set up appointment, we want to make sure that all this stuff's clear. So, at some point, we're going to have to send somebody or some person.
No, and I, I wouldn't suggest it, it start with a self-inspector.
No, no, I'm just saying-
And I think if you turn out you're good, then-
They allow them to self-inspect. Once they pass-
It has to come.
Once they pass, in some of the cities, once they pass the first inspection by the city, then they're allowed to self-certify in the city's spot checks.
Right.
They would, you know, they would pick four or five a year and go out and do spot checks. I was going to say something else, I forgot what it was, I'm sorry.
Can I ask chief a question?
Of course.
How many business inspections does the fire department do every year?
I couldn't tell you the exact number off the top of my head, but the, the way we do our inspections is the town is divided up into three sections. So, every, every business and hotel in the city gets looked at within, at least within a year or 18 months consistently.
Okay, but could you say 500 units or places of business?
At least, correct, at least. And, and that's in addition, remember the, I can assure you, the bygone days of, of waiting for the bell to go off are long past. In addition to all of our, all of our inspections, all of our hydrant maintenance, all of our training, running calls, apparatus maintenance, I mean, all the things that go into our day, we're tapped out at as it is. And, and we are doing inspections between myself and three captains because we had an inspector's position that hasn't been filled in a good number of years.
Okay, but I'm not actually asking you to do that.
Right.
Okay, great.
So, my first question is, my first question is, approximately how many business inspections do you do? 500, maybe more?
Maybe more. I'd have to, I'd have to do the research.
And, and do you do those year-round or do you do those in a three-month period?
We try to, we start those at the beginning of the year and we try to have them wrapped up by summer because of the call volume.
Okay, so, where I'm actually going with this is that if we had 700 units and we had a dedicated one or two persons, whatever that, whatever that may be, it's a business opportunity for someone, it's an inspector we bring in, yada, yada. Could we do 700 units in six months' time with, with two people dedicated to doing that to start? So, I mean, I'm looking at the financial part of this. If we were to hypothetically do $300 as the fee for a home inspection and we paid someone to do, we paid someone $125 an inspection and then the, the rest is the paperwork part and the filing and the systems that the city has to do, I'm just looking at how, how can we do this? How can we fund it? And can it be self-funding? Like, how long do we think it would take to do all these? Because I believe we need to have some sort of inspection program, so I want to find a happy medium in there. But, I'm not asking the fire department to do it. But, I would, I would recommend that the fire department be participative because if you had a structure that was built on a hillside in 1940 and there were some structural issues and some maybe fire issues that someone said, hey, we need you guys to come and do a second inspection on it.
Right, and well, that would get into the building inspector and, I mean, I only look at, my, or my, my personnel only look at fire prevention issues. And then now, when we start getting into structural issues, that's, that's out of my area of expertise. And, and for the sake of argument, say that we identify a structure that's on a hillside that is a very old construction, like Amanda explained, that's not illegal.
Right.
That's, they have a very old house that is, is less fire-safe than new construction, but it's not, it's not illegal, it's not out of compliance.
Mike, I have a question. When you do your fire inspections, do you make appointments with all those people? Or, do you just say, we're coming on Thursday?
Somewhere, somewhere in the middle. The captains will, they have a form letter that they pass out so that people can schedule an appointment. And then, places, a good example might be a place like the Metropol Marketplace where they can, if they can get in there, they can cover a good number of the individual businesses all in one shot. So, it's somewhere in the middle. Sometimes, people are accommodating and now's a good time and it doesn't impact their business, and then we're happy to make appointments as well. And then, that includes go-backs. If you find some deficiencies, sometimes you end up going back several times to the same business.
No. Not here.
I believe, that's why I brought it up, I believe this is something we should do. And I would like to see us glean, and using your expertise, Amanda, glean what seems to make the most sense. For example, I, well, I don't believe in a self-inspection until maybe the later on part, you know, they pass it and, and I agree with the property's under a certain age, perhaps, don't need to be inspected. And maybe as a courtesy, we, for those people that are five years and younger, people have access to this inspection list to know what it is so they can keep on top of their properties, perhaps.
Right, that they could always request an inspection.
Exactly. And, or the form would be online and they could just do it themselves to see where they are. And maybe we give everybody the opportunity, you know, the, once we get this program rolling, well, there's going to be enough PR on what it's all about that people are going to, their ears are going to be perking up.
And I think once we, I think if we were going to implement it, the first step would be to notify everyone that they need to, they need to register with the city. And most people, like I said, that if they have a business license, then great, then we already have them in our database. But, once we have that list, then we can, as part of that registration, we can provide them with what the checklist is going to be looking at.
Right.
This is what we're going to be coming to inspect. So, that gives them an, gives them a heads-up that these are the things that are going to be looked at and gives them an opportunity to perhaps go ahead and make some corrections ahead of time.
Right, right.
I like that idea, but also, the new ones need to be inspected too because they are getting fitted with, depending on how much work they've done retrofitting on their home, they're still getting the fire suppression system put in there. So, you test it once, you don't go back. As far as, as far as we're concerned right now, even some of the fire suppression systems that are in the city, once the fire department checks them, as far as we know, they can just turn everything off and we don't know if it's working or not.
So, then part of our inspection may be to confirm that the system is still charged.
But, like you say, you do it one, you flow it, you ring the bell, you check it out, make sure everything's not obstructed. Hey, and then two more years or three more years, we come back.
How big are the units that have to have that?
Depends how much they retrofit. They go by percentage you retrofit your home, depending on your single-family dwellings. The single-family dwellings are 50%, I think, chief, right?
So, that would be an interesting thing.
And, and the, and the, and the triplexes and duplexes are all 25% retrofitting.
Oh, okay.
I think.
Then they have to put in fire suppression.
I don't know if it's changed, maybe it has. But, I mean, it's just something to think about as part of our inspection somewhere.
Yeah.
I would think, I don't know.
But, I think Hayward's got a, a very thorough inspection list. Very thorough. And I, you know, and I don't know if there's some things that we really don't care about. I mean, window screens on single stories, do we, is that, because that's why window screens are important, right? Pretty much so kids don't fly out? I don't know. Or that's-
No Peter Pan.
I think, I think there could be some discretion, I guess, on some of these things, I would think.
Well, I, I think the building code requires screens.
Oh, it does? Okay.
It's more of a, it's more of a vermin problem, not your two-legged vermins, but your, all those little four-legged vermins that might-
Oh, okay.
-or flying ones that get in your-
To me, it seems like there's got to be somebody out there that does this for a living, retired fireman, retired fire inspector, or some person.
And if we don't even need somebody that, I mean, I think we can, I think we could definitely find people that we want to do.
I would think somebody over town or whatever.
And then, maybe, and then working with finance, figure out what the cost of this is and maybe, I don't know if it's said in any of these cities, I didn't, I've heard $250 is a fee and things like that.
And we can, and that's a question I, I did not ask these cities, is what qualifications their inspectors have.
So, that might just take a couple of phones.
In order to do it, whether it's part of their normal code enforcement department or if they, if it's their building official, which that seems like that person would be overqualified for the level inspection that you're asking, at least in the initial inspection.
Right. Norbert Reyes was working with the group and they were doing that over town. And, so-
It was just a name from the past, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think it's a really good idea if we start registering the units now because I think that's one of the keystones of getting this done, so that we start finding out what rented units are out there. And I think it's going to take time to do some initial research. units are out there, and I think it's going to take time, do some initial research to get this other stuff out.
Right.
I think we should request, require that all units get registered so that we know what's out there.
And how do you get, just by--
Send a letter then.
Send a letter out.
To every, to every parcel, wouldn't it be?
Every parcel? I, my first thing would probably be to go through the commuter subsidy database.
Okay. And it's not against the law to rent a room, right?
It's not a what?
If you have, and so, so if they're renting--
If you follow the processes, it's not against the law to rent a room out.
Okay.
You just need a business license.
But you need a business license.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect.
So, Mayor, I just want to piggyback that. Amanda, I really appreciated the, the aspects that you put in here that all were in common, common with each other, those four, the registration under a certain age, or having newer units be inspected at a longer timeframe in between, or if they've had, you know, clean records from one or two prior inspections. I also want to look at incentivizing those who are willing to come forward and, and ask for their units to be inspected. So hypothetically, if we could put in a tiered structure that said, and I don't know, I'm just throwing out an example, if you sign up to have your, your unit inspected in the first six months, your inspection fee is $300. If you sign up in the, you know, six to 12-month period, your inspection fee is $400. If we have to chase you down, your inspection fee is $600. So something that incentivizes people to say, "Hey, I, you know, I, I really want to, want to do this."
Get it done.
And get it done, and then, "At least I know." And then we, we provide a package ahead of time that says, "This is what we'll be inspecting." So people who legitimately don't know that a screen is a requirement can, can fix whatever they can ahead of time rather than have this lengthy to-do list after the fact. Or if it's something that they don't understand, you know, potentially, we could put together an FAQ that explains, you know, "Hey, this is why we look at what we look at." I know it sounds like it's a lot of, of man-hours, but if we really looked at it in terms of, this could be a really big project to start for the first year, but then after that, I imagine that this would be a really great business opportunity for somebody who's living here, who's looking to do something on the side, that, that we say, "Here are the qualifications, go out, get yourself certified, come start a business," and you have an opportunity to, to pitch for doing some of the inspections for the city.
So I have a question for Elizabeth. So if the city wants to implement an inspection program, does that require including this in our municipal code? It would have to be an ordinance? Or would, it would, would have to be an ordinance? Okay. So we would have, we would need to come back with a, the guidelines that we would want to implement. We need to propose a fee because it, the fee has to cover the cost of providing the service, so that would be part of what we would implement in the ordinance. And then I think that's when we would decide if we want to have penalties and, and like Cindy mentioned. Okay.
For people that don't have licenses now, we don't do anything, right? It's just they don't have them.
I think we just kind of don't know, there's no official way to know that they're out there.
Right.
I mean, because, you know, I know Joey lives over there in that house, but I don't go down and check their business license, but it's just kind of anecdotal where I've had people, "Oh, you really need a business license if you're renting year-round?" It's like, yeah.
Well, this is at the start, they're hearing it now.
But in all fairness, though, I learned that tonight, and I will just call it out that if one of my, one of my kids comes home from college and they want to bring a college friend that wants to work on the island for the summer, and we say, "Okay, you know, we'd like you to pay $300 to pitch in for food and utilities and whatnot," I'm technically renting them a room, I would not have known that I needed a business license for that. So I, I think that there is a benefit to putting the information out there, saying, "If you didn't know, please do know, and please register, and here's your, your period of time that, just come register." You know? No penalties, no nothing, and just allow people to gain the information.
Yep. And it, and it helps us because then we have a firm number of how many units there are out there. I mean, we know what the census says, and we know what these other studies says, but when you actually have the list of addresses and how many units there are, that's a benefit to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good job on this one, Amanda. Thank you.
Chief, anything else to add?
Marching orders, okay.
Anything else to add to that?
I don't hear anything.
Okay. Yeah, direction, right?
So the direction would be to--
I would suggest that we publicly notice the business license aspect first and then come back in a couple of months so staff has time to fully lay out.
Yeah, that's great. That's exciting. Okay. Item 12, this is prepared by legal.
Yes, this one's mine. So actually, this is just a really simple one, it's just a cleanup. Back in 2000, when you extended your, and modified your redevelopment plan, you adopted a resolution that allowed you to keep some, an extra portion, 25% of the tax increment. The county has asked us for the original resolution, and we can't locate it, so we're doing it again.